Okay, we'll go ahead and get started again with our old business. First thing on our old business is termination of the Ferrystone Solar Sitting Agreement.
Yes, so this, um, is this on? Is it on? Can y'all hear me? Which one? Is that on? Okay. So I think my understanding was there was some discussion at the planning commission meeting last month to formally terminate the previously approved solar sitting agreement with Ferrystone, the Ferrystone Solar Sitting Agreement. So you have an agenda item in your packet. This is asking the county attorney to proceed with a formal letter to terminate the development of the Ferrystone Solar Project. So essentially what that would do was, you know, Nolan Boyd, the one that was approved last year, and if the project ever did want to come back to fruition, which we don't predict, because they've told us they're not moving forward with it, and they've even paid us money for the previous legal expenses incurred, and the application fee, they reimburse us for the application fee. But if they did want to come back, they would have to go through the process again.
Okay. Basically, it's expected, just made it official. Right. Any questions about that? If not, can I get a motion to, for the county attorney to proceed with a formal letter to terminate the development of the Ferrystone Solar Project?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. On to budget discussions.
All right. So we made the adjusted changes as discussed during the March 24th, whatever that last March meeting was. And, you know, we've gone back and reviewed some things, increased revenues, reduced expenditures. We come back to you tonight with new general fund surplus deficit of $197,336.
Could you repeat that number one more time?
So, from there, Amy, did you distribute those?
Oh.
Thank you.
Okay.
So from here, we would need some further direction from the board. Oh, one, sorry, one thing kind of before we get to this, sorry. We had originally put in the fiscal year '26 budget, a mower for Parks and Rec, because we thought that what we currently had would get us to July. We've been made aware in the last week that we do not have the equipment we really need to do efficient mowing at this time. So we would ask that, instead of putting that on the fiscal year '26 budget, that we go ahead and move forward with purchasing the mower now. It would come out of the same pot of money, just asking for, you know, authorization to go ahead. And we have the multiple quotes, all that good stuff. We'd actually just go ahead with the purchase of that now, so they can use it now, as opposed to waiting until July. So if I could just get kind of a consensus on that. Luke is here, if you have any questions. Is he still here right now?
Mr. Williams, what was our final lawnmower decision? What?
It's a, it was $14,500, I think.
Yeah. And it is a, what brand?
Uh, the.
The Hustler?
Yeah, it's a Hustler, 60-inch, yeah.
And they can be serviced?
At Dan River.
Okay.
That's who we handle everything with right now.
Okay.
What kind of engines they got on it?
Uh, Talosox.
Did you check, not stirring the pot, but did you check over Tractor Supply? They got those bad boy mowers, about half of that price.
We checked, he checked with what, three different dealerships?
Yeah.
He checked with three different dealerships, somewhere where we can have like a service, we can have dedicated service.
Well, can you give service or myself? I mean, I do mine. I'm not a professional. They're really, seriously, I mean, you save, I think I looked at them the other day, the best ones are like eight or nine thousand dollars. They got the Kohlhaas engine, 20 something horsepower, all of it, just a good heavy build deck and everything.
What are they rated to mow? And how much, how many parks, how much, how many hours roughly do we put on mow?
Right now, the one that, we did have three, and one right now is currently in operable. It was a 2012, it had 3,200 hours on it. And, you know, it needs a new engine, roll bar, tires, blade, it needs everything.
It's got 3,200, or how many areas, how many parks are you servicing?
So we are accountable for 74 acres of county land. So we mow D.R. Park, Patrick Springs Park, I see D.R., we also mow the library and rubbery as well. Once when we are using rubber, so once we have soccer, when soccer is being played or whatever, we are responsible for maintaining it, rubbery as well.
Dan River, where they at, where you have to carry it back to have it serviced?
It's fine.
That dealer that you carry it back to to have it serviced, where is it, where is it at?
It's a mound area.
So you've got to carry it to mound area every time you change a mower or anything?
Yeah, that's too, it takes always too, we've handled business with it for a long time.
And we did get quotes from two other dealers as well.
Also, I like the mowers that Clayton's talking about, but I got to tell you, they're homeowner mowers, and the transmissions that are hydro gears, and I saw parts from them. Why? Because they break down constantly. Hustler has their own strong hydraulic motors, they're not, they're not off-brand or second brand, third party. You know, off the shelves, late transmissions, they're very heavy duty. So just for that reason, I'd want to go with the Hustler.
I don't think what Tractor Supply is, I don't think they'll service those hours and meet our needs. We'll probably have to buy, what, two or three, just to get through the summer.
A commercial grade mower would be sufficient for what we have to take care of.
Okay. I won't argue about it, but that was $8,000 you could save there, and I would think y'all ought to be in maintenance department to service a lawnmower.
I agree with you, all front end hydro gear transmissions cost the price of the entire model.
Okay, like I said, I'm not arguing about it, I just brought up a point here.
I think about $12,000.
So is it okay to go ahead with the, like I said, it was in the proposed budget for $14,500 for fiscal year '26, so we would just go ahead with that purchase in the next, you know, the near future, so they could have it as soon as possible?
That's a pleasure of the board. Does that sound reasonable? I see two head nods.
I agree.
I see two head nods, and I'll nod as well, so we'll go ahead and go on with that, so that way we can start mowing any day now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so back to where we were, so where we were. So we're at new general, did I miss anything else? Okay, sorry. New general fund surplus deficit of $197,336. So I didn't know if the board had come up with any additional feedback over the next couple weeks, over the last couple weeks. We have, you know, a couple options at this point. Can move forward with trying to increase some revenues. I'm not really sure if or where any more cuts would come from. You know, there has been mention of our reserve fund. Once again, it's a little worrisome for operating. We do have a new tax assessment that will be in place in two years. So, a couple of different options.
Well, I'm going to go ahead and reiterate that I think we ought to take that balance out of the reserve. That's what it's there for. Also, our personal property tax is, we got to, we got to increase that. There's no way around it, it's been at that price for many, many years. Inflation has not stopped. And if your amount you're collecting stays at one price, and your inflation continues at the rate it's been going over the last, I don't know, 15 years or so since that's changed, that's revenue erosion. You think you're getting that amount of revenue, which you're really not because of the inflation. We're the second lowest, I think, in the region. Might be the lowest at this point. Grayson, I think, might have raised theirs. And what I'm proposing is be right in the middle, there's a median, there's a median amount or levy for regional and neighboring counties. So if we could average what that median is, and that median would be, that's a fair price for taxes. And then phase that in over a three-year period, and then after that, index it to the CPI-U, which is Consumer Price Index Urban, which is a tool that measures inflation. And you index it to that, and that gives you your automatic increases with inflation, you don't have to worry about pricing.
You lost me, but I won't agree to increasing the personal property tax without an argument. And, you know, you may not increase the rate in 10 years, but everything you go to buy has went up, so you pay more anyway. And one other problem in Patrick County, with the machine and tools tax, it's own business. You've got Ten Oaks down in Honda, and it's tough. Imagine what it costs for $1.71 for every machine they got in there. And you might pay for an old Toyota like mine, but.
I understand machine and tool taxes is historically connected.
It's rough on the business.
Well, it's the same price, but isn't it two different items? Can't you raise one with every other?
A lot of counties do, a lot of counties have a five or six rate.
Can you raise one without raising the other machinery and tools and personal property? I think most places they stay, I'm sorry, Linda's not here.
I think they're different rates.
Do what?
I think they're different, I have seen different counties have different rates for different.
Right, different tag, I'm just talking about the personal.
Different schedules, but.
No, I understand the economic development implications of raising the.
But you've got right here on this paper, increase expected in machinery tools and taxes, $50,179 without changing the rate, so, rest my case on that.
Or is that because we've got the construction and they've got the equipment here in the county?
That's it.
Yeah.
Last year's budget was based on the January 1/23 personal property tax values, and now that we've received it for '24, we're using that number now to schedule out to '26.
So that's an increase we'll see this coming year, we'll see, you know, some extra personal property tax probably through 2031, but once the 58 project is done, then that will go away. So just keep that in mind.
The thing is, whenever you have a government doing a budget, and you see that in order to balance that budget, we have to nitpick little things, the death of the thousand cuts, we have to get rid of water costs, little things. If price was the problem, we'd be doing things like Steve Ferry suggested. You'd be having purchasing, you know, there's, you know, all the different departments purchase, you know, through a purchasing department. If it really costs, that's the kind of thing we would be doing to cut costs. This is a revenue problem, it's not a cost problem. And it's a revenue problem because our taxes are just dysfunctional at this point. They're dated, and they need to be brought up to speed. I know it's an unpopular idea, but it's also a factor.
I also kind of feel our problem, kind of what we're looking at, I think it somewhat cripples our departments. And our departments can't adequately function and do the job that we need them to do with some of the things that we're proposing. But if the money's not there, the money's not there. I kind of think we should look at an increase on personal property tax. I know that covers citizens that doesn't have real estate, and I know that, you know, those on a limited income, you know, they're not driving around in $80,000 vehicles either. So it kind of balances out. And it hasn't, we haven't increased our personal property tax in quite some time. But I would like to see, or have the discussion about increasing personal property tax, and maybe even transit occupancy tax, to bring some of this deficit up, and to get at least a few more dollars to our departments in the name of some damage control. Because I feel like that we're just kind of pushing the can down the road, and when our departments, in the future, our, the next generation board's going to have to come up with money to bring departments back up to standards that, you know, we haven't budgeted for.
Another consideration is the fact that we have a progressive real estate tax assessment, which means that the lower-income folks pay more of the load for the, you know, greater income folks. If you get revenue from a different source, it helps you offset any real estate tax increases. And it's also a more fair tax, because the wealthy people are paying, you know, you've got an $80,000 truck, you pay your fair share. If your grandpa and grandpa's living off of $600 a month in social security, naturally you're going to have a less expensive vehicle, and you're probably going to pay about 40 bucks a year. So it makes things, you know, a great deal fair across the board. And again, it offsets the need for a real estate tax increase, or at least part of it.
And even as next year, as we have our reassessment over the next coming year, and next year you're going to be looking at a huge increase in our property value, as our surrounding counties have gone way up. And we're going to need to be looking at bringing that real estate rate down.
Any offset, if we're going to do a three-year program on this thing, then at least within two years, you'll have some kind of offset.
And that would help lower real estate rate to balance out the increase in value.
So as y'all are discussing that, from the numbers who are given in the email that came out February 24th, we would, you would have to implement a increase of over seven cents on personal property, just to cover the $197,000 deficit we currently have.
Just to give you an idea, what median price is, median price would be about $2.23. That's right in the middle of everybody. So what I'm proposing is a three-year increase to $2.20, sort of a modern.
And right now, I'm more thinking of a 1%, 2% increase, just to kind of help offset that. I mean, I know we're not going to make up for it, and that is too much of an increase to ask of that, but even a 1% or something would kind of help offset that. And again, kind of help funnel, get a little more money to our departments, so that they can better operate.
Now, that's difference in opinion.
If memory serves.
We've already cut from $2.4 million down to a deficit of $197, and I don't think anybody's going to be suffering with that, and I think we need a little more time, cut a little more, make it work. I don't know about you, but I get a social security check every month, and it increased 2.5%, I'm making less than $1,000 a month, and I can't stand much more tax. That's just the way it is.
Some of the cuts, to be quite frank, are unrealistic.
Not really, not really, I don't think so.
We have one department that completely cut office supplies to zero. So I don't think that's realistic to think that that department is going to actually be able to go through an entire year with zero office supplies.
Well, you look real close at your bills and appropriations this month, and all of the ones that have moved money from one fund to the other, some of them $3,000 is one comes in my head right quick. If they can move it from one fund to the other one, they're over budgeted start with.
And I don't disagree with you, I'm not disagreeing, and that's why, like I said, if you want to approve the budget, dipping into that savings, at the end of next year, I mean, we've had a surplus for the last four or five-plus years consistently. Will, I mean, unless something crazy happens, I would foresee that Patrick County will have a, let's give a round number, $200,000 surplus. But what I'm also saying is, there are going to be some line items that, like I said, it's not realistic to think that a department can go all year with $0 in office supplies. So having, you know, another, cutting an additional $197,000 out is going to be disingenuous, I guess is what I'm saying. We're going to have to come back to y'all and say, hey, we ran out of money. Or, I know, you know, there are some board members that doesn't like the moving around of line items. I'll be honest, I don't either. But I've been told numerous times, that's how we do it here, and that's how we've always done it here. And even when I've tried to change that, and says that's disingenuous, I've been met with, well, this is just how we're going to do it. And to be quite honest, when our, when our department heads are giving an impossible task of cutting costs that can't be cut, you know, they have to present, well, hey, this is our 6.5% cut, you know, you tasked us with presenting this cut, here we are, this is what I've cut. I mean, the cost of some things, we just can't, we can't cut. I mean, I'm sure all of us have had our personal budgets hit with the rise of insurances and different things, utilities. Unfortunately, we can only cut so far. So, I mean, like I said, you know, if y'all have specific examples of, I mean, yeah, there's, there may be a few thousand dollars here and there that we could cut, but to cut $200,000 out, you know, we've tried. We've been looking at this for two months now, staff has, so.
Well, you cut $2.2 million, so that's doing good.
Like I said, but some of those cuts are not, to be quite honest, are not genuine.
With the building inspection, I know, especially with the changing code, so like, if you're going to build a garage behind your house, now that has to be inspected by a building inspector. So that increases the number of inspections they're going to have to do. And I know part of what they cut out was their fuel.
And I'll be honest, our local county departments, if you look at the Patrick County budget, what Patrick County has to pay for, and you look at our Patrick County 100% local departments, we have the smallest budgets of anybody. So what we can, what I can go back to staff and say, cut, has, I promise, I'll hold my hand to God, and say, has been cut. And I truly believe that my department heads have cut what they can cut.
We've probably got the lowest rate of income of anybody else, too.
Jonathan, I just want to clarify, I don't want this increase to pay for balancing the budget this year, I'm talking about improving going forward. Looking at this budget, this process that we've been through, is the best illustration I could give you. And 1% or 2%, I think 1% was what, $27,000 or something like that? So 1% or 2% is not going to cure the revenue problem going forward. So what I'm looking to do, and I want to phase it in over time, because it's a shocking amount of increase, you know, from what they do to actually what's fair. And so going forward, we're going to have this problem every year, of nitpicking little tiny things, it's just, it's an issue that we could cure by doing the right thing, this is just the first step. I've talked about it as far as revenue generation.
So would you like to come back and talk to us about some more, the actual numbers and everything, or are you going to try to make a motion now, or?
No, I was just discussing it right now.
Okay.
As far as the $197, I believe that we're well within the phase zone, using the reserves for that this year, but that's not tenable to keep doing that every year. So no, I want to see what the board thinks. Understand that $2.20 is in the middle of everybody, it's a fair, balanced amount of money, and it would take three years to get there. And then if you index it to the CPI like I'm talking about, you never have to worry about it again.
Just as a reminder, the original budget calendar had a public hearing, the proposed public hearing date scheduled for April 28th. So if there are any proposed tax increases or the budget, we're going to do that on April 28th. We wouldn't have a motion to schedule the public hearing for April 28th, so we can get it in the paper this week.
To what? To what? I'm not hearing, I'm picking up some background.
Well, let's, let's hold the board a microphone, just to see what.
Okay. Any comments about Mr. Marshall? Comments?
I'd like to ask some numbers, so we can see what that, in order to make a motion, I would like to have some numbers.
I think if we could look, and I'm not saying yes or no, I'm just asking, I like to look at numbers. And, you know, I don't know what the average homeowner, I shouldn't say homeowner, what the average resident of Patrick County pays in personal property. I mean, it's going from $1.71 to, you said $2.20?
$2.20 over three years.
What would we, what would be the proposal for this year?
I'll take the $1.71, the difference between $2.20 and $1.71 divided by three, and that would be your proposal for this year.
So $49 divided by three, $49 divided by three.
I can tell you right now.
We're going to increase it 16 cents, so that'd be $1.71, $1.87.
Beyond reasonable. But again, that's not what I'm looking for to balance the budget, much revenue going forward. We don't necessarily need that for.
So have a generate right at that, about half million dollars a year.
Yeah.
But you, you and Ms. Jones, we normally have roughly how much extra at the end of the year, or what, unspent? I know there's no exact number, but there's got to be something floating out there.
So far this year, expect to be another $2 million added to our reserves. Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Expected to be the same as last year? If the rest, if the next three months do the same as we've been doing.
Yeah, so if we were to dip into our reserves right now, and pull out $197,336, that would be sufficient to get us through, that we could approve a budget, and that, so maybe instead of next year, instead of putting in $2 million, we put in 1.8 million. Does that sound, am I thinking the right way, or? Correct, correct.
How much are we still talking about pulling out reserves for capital improvement?
All the capital improvements.
How much?
I think the last one was, whatever that is.
$1,328.
And we're going to pull that out of reserves?
Mm-hmm.
Not contingency, that's for sure.
Yeah, I know that's reserves, and you know my argument on that, too.
And to fund the capital expenditures we've made this year so far, we haven't had to pull out of reserves, because our revenue has been more than we, well, either our expenditures are less, or the revenues more than we had originally budgeted. But the trend is right now for us to have another $2 million at the end of this year.
Well, that's the reason we got all that in reserves, because it's been about that much over what we projected for how many years, you know? So we're not really hurting. Well, I don't know. It's just hard to figure all those numbers out. You're better at it than I am. But I don't know, I think we don't raise taxes enough. I can't go to social security and tell them I need X amount more dollars because my taxes went up. And it's a lot of people in this county that lives on social security, fixed income.
And I'm thinking of that, because this will offset the real estate, which is causing them to pay for wealthier people's taxes, unfortunately. That's a probably a drain like you couldn't believe in this county. A million and a half million a year.
What other discussion about the budget right now?
What's the corrections to wages and benefits?
Well, the majority of that is DSS is still in our budget process, and they added those three new people, whether in this year, and they're adding them this year, they weren't originally in my original salary estimate. That and a couple of other people who've got their probation area increases that I had to count for.
Have they actually hired all three of those people?
They have one left to hire. They hired the three new ones, but they have one vacancy in an existing position. So they're down one.
Yeah, the state's not done their budget yet, have they?
It's not finalized.
So you don't know what, exactly what all they're going to do, or change. School system, same way, school system don't really know until the state does their, right?
I mean, yeah, I mean, you know, it has been the last three years, it can always change, but if we wait until, I mean, there was one year, the state didn't do their stuff till after July 1st, so we can't necessarily wait on them to give us a final number.
You need to wait as long as you can, I mean, and still have time to get it all in the computer.
We do need to.
Because you take the school system last year, after the state did that budget, we end up starting with owing them $400,000 more, so we don't know what their budget's going to be till the state does.
I think it was $70,000. You know, we do, you know, we don't have the public hearing.
But they pay for more SRO officers, so we didn't finally have to take them $70,000. But if they'd have held us two, it'd been $400,000. Any county was several million, Franklin County was several million.
If, um, you know, if we don't, if you choose not to do the public hearing, the April 28th meeting, we really do need to do it by the May 12th meeting, to have the vote at the last Tuesday of May meeting.
Some of the boards are thinking about it. A 1.5 cent increase in the TOT would cover that as well. And that's basically the only tax that affects very, very few people in our county. Only people it might affect is family that comes in to, I don't know, high school graduation or runs an Airbnb, something like that. And those people that come to visit do use our services as well.
Could we have, like, some numbers to think about at our April 28th meeting, and then maybe schedule any kind of, should we come to the decision, that gives us that first meeting in May to...
So, I mean, we have the tax chart right here. What would be helpful, though, is what, like, what y'all are thinking? Are y'all thinking of, you know, 1 cent tax on this, or 20 cent tax on this, you know, some type of, we have specifics, and that'll help us, you know, but, you know, like, Mr. Wood just did the math right there. So, I mean, we have the tax units in front of us, but there are specifics.
Yeah, but what would that do for revenue going forward just a couple of years?
The way I see it is that would give us a little more money as a county, would also give tourists a little bit more money to keep promoting themselves, because they will keep...
Well, they'll still just keep the 3%.
What was the amount you suggested?
Uh, 1.5 cents, which would bump it up to 6.5%, of which the max is...
The max is 7.
And I'm sure there are lots of counties across the state that probably have 7%.
Yeah, a lot of people have went to 7 in recent years.
But if we bumped it up to 1.5 or 2, did the county get the whole thing, or does...
Yeah, we checked on that last year. The county would get to keep the increase for the general fund. So, a full 2% increase would give us about $280,000 for transient occupancy tax, which would cover the deficit and maybe even get back some of the unrealistic cuts, or give some money to put in the contingency.
I mean, you have the other option, is the meals tax that brings in, 1% increase in meals tax, you know, that's one of the taxes technically you don't have to pay. You know, it just depends on if you want to go out and eat, that's your decision, as opposed to some of these other ones. That would be a 2% increase on meals tax, and the county would cover that as well. I'm just throwing options out here for everybody, because we're going to have to pick something. I'm just trying to do, figure out what's going to, you know, do the least amount of pocketbook damage to our citizens.
I understand pocketbook damage, but I just request you keep in mind the revenue going forward. It's a big issue.
A big help on that would be bringing in more businesses and getting more businesses opened up. And you're not going to do that with increasing taxes on them, when all the coolers they buy, and the grill they buy, and everything else they do when they come in. If you get more businesses in, that would generate the tax revenue going up. And they don't have to be big ones, just a little restaurant, an ice cream shop, or anything, but you're going to kill them if you're going to keep raising machine and tools tax.
But I didn't talk about machine and tools tax.
Well, that's what it is.
No, it's not. It's a separate tax.
$1.71 to personal property tax. I pay it on everyone in my trucks, every equipment I got, and everything else.
It's not the machine and tool tax.
It is, too. You go back and look at the book, don't it say machine and tool tax?
They're both the same rate.
They're both the same rate.
They're both the same rate, but they're both the same. It's listed as a machine and tool and personal property.
Like I said earlier, a lot of places keep them the same, just for, I'm sure, whatever reason. Like I said, Glenn is not here tonight, but I think you can change them independently if you like.
Yeah, the rate's the same right now, but the taxes, salaries, and the tax return.
So, we assume we have to have our balanced budget before the public input on the budget?
No, I mean, like, so, if there was, you could do a public hearing for the budget and a proposed tax increase, you could do, like, both public hearings the same night, if that was, just the way the printing of the enterprise is, we do just have to have...
Or you could do the reserve and take more time off the taxes.
And then, whatever you advertise, you can always come down from that, but you can't go above.
You know, Mr. Marshall, I agree with you there. You know, we basically have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 taxes that we can look at. You know, you've mentioned personal property, I mentioned TOT, you know, the meals tax is an option. I think we've all veered away from real estate, because I think 73 cents is a gracious plenty on that. I personally would not have an issue with going into reserves to balance the budget right now with every bit of good intentions of bumping something up to make up for that that we're pulling from it, because I'd love to get our budget set, but I would also like to have time before we make that impact, like I said, in somebody's pocketbook in the county. You know, that's a huge decision for us sitting up here, you know, where we want to go from, you know, whether it's 1, whether it's 2, and exactly how much on each 1.
And like you were saying, you could advertise, I mean, not just being crazy, you could advertise something, or you could advertise whatever, and then you can come back down. So, you know, if the board does want to entertain something like that, you know, you can pick a number that covers our budget, maybe gives us a little extra revenue, and then if you want to come back down, or if you don't want to do it at all, that's, I mean, that's kind of the purpose of the public hearing.
I've seen that done for a lot of years, and I never saw it come back down.
But I'm, no, I'm saying, like, if you advertise 20 cent, y'all don't have to approve 20 cent. You could approve 2 cents. Whatever you advertise, I'm not talking about, like, bringing the tax, like, approving it and then bringing it down. I'm saying whatever you advertise, you can come down from.
I think what you're saying, Jonathan, is prove, because it's really, really difficult for subjects. But I think we also, at the same time, we all need to really, really commit to increasing revenue, because we're going to have the same issues next year.
Right. But we could agree tonight to pull the, and I'm just saying we could, 197,336 out of reserve funds, so we do have a balanced budget at that point, with the intention, and yes, I know where the road of good intentions leads. I do realize that, but we're not going down that road, people, of weighing the pros and cons of any tax increase, where it should come from to make up for that basically $200,000 shortfall. Is that seen?
I like where you're going with it.
Now, that would require a second public hearing, if you're going to then change the tax rate that you didn't advertise in your original.
But we could do that a little caring. But we wouldn't have to do that.
I would say the, our Constitutional's Commissioner of Revenue and Treasurer would probably, because, you know what I'm saying, like, whatever the tax rate is, is what they send out. So, they send out those, if they have to resend something, you know what I'm saying, it can be...
Well, those personal property taxes won't go out until after the new fiscal year starts.
So, any decision where you're saying to be made for this fiscal year has to be made about the same time as the project.
Yes, that's what I was told was preferred. I mean, I did, I'm going back through my emails now. Lynda did say it's better if personal property and machinery and tools remain the same rate. Now, I do not know what the reasoning is behind that. I apologize.
Just makes it easier.
But she said it is better. Well, it probably makes it clearer to say, like, what's personal property versus a machine and tool?
I agree with Clayton. I'm not in favor of raising the...
That's up to...
And at some point, yes, but we've got to take baby steps here, too. I mean, you can't just, we have to raise, increase revenue, it's very important, but we just can't slam it on, excuse me, we can't slam it on the county all the time. And I don't necessarily agree they would chase businesses off, because I see, like, Halifax County, they're just doing phenomenal in attracting business, and all their taxes are higher than ours.
We're not attracting them, you believe me?
Well, from an economic development standpoint, local taxes honestly have very little input on a business decision, because the cost of everything else has gone up so much in the past, you know, decades. The cost of labor, the cost of utilities, all of those things they look at first before their...
And we can always incentivize them, too.
Yes, you can always do revates, correct?
Incentivization without revenue is clearly bad ideas regarding that. Jonathan, could we put the date out as far as feasible, and then come to some kind of a, you know, use the reserve, go ahead and call it balanced, but then come to some kind of a consensus?
It's not going to make sense, but you've still got to pull that much money out of capital improvements, there in the budget, too.
It would still be balanced.
But it don't have to be done until June 30th at midnight.
It didn't say approve it. Jonathan understands what I'm talking about.
I know what you're talking about.
Push the hearing out to the furthest date possible. Call it balanced, because you can use the reserve, that's what it's for legally, I mean, by definition.
So, we could do that in the 28th meeting, and then in May, actually have the public hearing about raising whatever rate, and we can discuss the rates, what we wanted to rally to, and then have a public hearing in May.
I think we all agree, we got to increase revenue, so, otherwise, what?
I don't necessarily agree with that.
We don't have...
The county, the county population is decreasing, and the county government keeps growing everybody here, so, you know, somewhere something just like this.
I understand your perspective.
And the population in the county is getting older instead of younger people.
I see it in the mirror every morning.
Yep. We just need to keep working on it.
So, if we were to have a public hearing on the budget in two weeks, we still don't have to approve the budget at that meeting?
Right.
We can still work on it.
You can't approve it at the same meeting.
Right.
We need to have another work session.
So, you have the public hearing, like, say, if y'all scheduled the public hearing for the 28th, then essentially you could vote on it at the May 12th meeting?
We need to have another work session on the 28th, and then we can decide about...
I mean, I thought tonight was kind of a work session. Is there any, is there any input?
It worked out today.
You know, Mr. Kendrick, I agree with some of that, but I also think that we, we up here have looked over this budget, that the people sitting at the tables have looked over this budget. If we go ahead and do a public input in two weeks, we can get, you know, the people that are sitting out there to tell us, you know, maybe there's something they've seen, or that they view that's really important that we may have cut, or something that they don't view as important that we could, you know, possibly come from. It's kind of like I told them about the money going towards Patrick and Henry for the Patrick promise, you know, reach out to me and tell me, you know, what we need to, what we need to do, because they're ultimately the ones that elected us, so we're trying to do what they want as well. You know, it's not a, it doesn't come down to just the five of us sitting up here, you know, we're just trying to do the will of the other 16,000 people in the county. I would feel okay with setting the budget hearing for two weeks from today at our hearing, our work session.
I'll make that motion.
You will? Okay.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second.
Will it have any tax increases not to exceed a certain cent?
Let's do this first.
But that's part of it.
I know.
Okay.
Let's do this first.
Are we using the reserve to balance? Otherwise, we can't really...
We don't have to approve the budget. We can't do it that night. We'll have to bump it back, but we can at least get the honest opinion of the people that are out there, because I know there are people chomping in the bed to tell us what we need to do.
Public comment tonight, I mean, there was option for public comment, we've had, I don't know, four or five meetings since we started this.
So, Ms. Jones, do we need to include in that, though? Not, you know, we would have to pick one of the taxes now not to exceed, right? We couldn't just say, "Meals tax not to exceed 2%, transient occupancy not to exceed 1.5", we'd have to...
I mean, you could list every one if you wanted.
You could do every single one if you want.
Who made that motion? Would you consider?
How about we just do the public hearing, then I'll, we'll make a separate motion on taxes?
Okay.
How about that?
So, I have a motion and a second to do our public hearing on the budget on the 28th of April. Any discussion on that? If not, Mr. Marshall?
Just for clarification, so, well, okay, so we don't have to approve it, so we can add the tax? Okay, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Kendrick?
I'd be okay with a public hearing, I'll set the date.
Okay. Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Overby?
Ah.
And I vote aye as well. So, we will have our public hearing on next year's budget on April 28th, so we can get that in the paper and advertise it. Now, would anybody else like to make a motion for a maximum of any tax increases to be discussed at that time?
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for potential transient occupancy tax increase of 2 cents to go specifically to fire and rescue on April 28th.
I'll second that one.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So, if that's going specific, fire and rescue comes out of general budget, right?
Yeah, so we could, you know, we could say...
Separate that out.
But we're earmarking these funds specifically for fire and rescue.
What is our current amount that goes to fire and rescue?
Well, the capital itself is 235, and then each organization gets a...
I mean, the capital alone is 230,000, and then contributions of 15,000 to 22,000 per squadron department.
And then, yeah, and then operating contributions are 126 for ambulance. Oh, no, sorry, that's fire. And then you get 126 and 315, so, I mean, yeah, that would work.
Okay. So, we have a motion, Mr. Overby and Mr. Kendrick had a second, to a increase in the TOT not to exceed 2 cents. Any discussion, any further discussion to, I'm sorry, to go to fire and rescue? Any further discussion on that?
And it's a public hearing.
Yes, it's a public hearing. Okay, Mr. Marshall?
What I just heard, if I have this correctly, is we're going to spend revenue without increasing county revenue, so, no, I think we're, I think we're getting off the beaten path of what the TOT taxes even for.
Mr. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes, because it's a discussion, and we can, so, yes.
Mr. Overby?
Ah.
And I vote aye as well. So, we will have a public comment?
Public hearing.
Public hearing, I'm sorry, on increasing the transient occupancy tax by no more than 2 cents at our April 28th meeting.
Designated for the fire and rescue.
Designated for fire and rescue.
So, what are we going to use county revenue for the next year, anticipated in the next budget? Because that does nothing to, if we do that, it does nothing to increase revenue in the county.
It increases revenue by 280,000.
You just said it's earmarked for right now.
Yes.
Is that, are you talking about replacing what they currently get, or on top of what they're currently getting?
No, not on top of... No, not on top of.
Okay.
So it'd be kind of, kind of protected, probably, for that, as out of, they're, call it kind of a protected.
Yeah, basically, it's a guarantee.
Yeah.
I shouldn't say guarantee, the TOT could fluctuate some, roughly two hundred and eighty thousand dollars that is earmarked just for that, is that, was that your ultimate goal?
Exactly, because I'm, I'm not going to, I, I don't think that we need any more money going into the general fund right now.
Anything else? I know, Mr. Marshall, you said that we, you know, income coming forward, would you like to add anything?
Well, what was that one-third, Beth?
What now?
The one-third, uh, increase on the.
Oh, one-third, to get to two twenty, is that what you're asking? Would have been an increase of sixteen cent.
Sixteen cents, okay, I'll make the motion to increase the, uh, personal property tax by that amount.
Okay.
Or to schedule a public hearing.
Schedule a public hearing.
To discuss.
Okay. And so we can come down off that, but we're.
And we don't have to take any of it, we can.
Okay, right. Yeah. I'll second that, because I would like to have that discussion.
So we have a motion and a second to have a public hearing on increasing the personal property tax by sixteen cents, uh, not to exceed, I'm sorry, not to exceed sixteen cents.
Admitting that that's intended as an incremental increase of the first year over three years.
Okay, that would be the first of three increases on a yearly basis.
Yes.
Does that sound?
Yes.
That right? Okay, um, I see, and you still want to second that, Mr.?
Do discussion, yes.
Do discussion? Okay, um, so we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
No.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
No.
I'll vote aye because it's just a discussion, so.
And we don't have to take any of it.
We don't have.
We can reduce.
That's what I'm hoping to have to do, is to say none, uh, but we'll, we'll look at that.
So we have.
Nothing wrong with discussion.
So just to recap, we have three public hearings, the April twenty-eighth meeting, one for the budget, a two percent increase of TOT, and a sixteen cent increase to personal property.
For discussion.
Right.
But it'll be all in one ad.
Right, right.
Because we have to take those increases at their maximum and put them in the budget, and then you can come down from that.
Okay.
Because they're all tied together, correct? I mean, it's, I mean, you can do several motions when you eventually adopt them all.
Right.
But we're going to advertise it as one because we need to show that revenue.
Okay.
And a potential budget amount.
Um, so, so we're set on those, is that looking that way? Um, the one thing I would like to find out about Mr. Marshall's, uh, plan of bumping the personal property is, I, I don't know which one could answer my question, but if we do a sixteen cent increase, what the average person in Patrick County is paying in personal property, can, is that something we can look at?
We can ask, we can.
We can, maybe we can figure that out over the next couple of weeks.
We can ask.
You know, if, if, if it's not, you know, if it's five dollars, or if it's going to be fifty dollars or five hundred dollars, uh, you know, I honestly don't know what my personal property is right off the top of my head, I'd have to go look. Um, so that's something that, that I would like to know when we get ready to have the discussion.
I think average per vehicle is going to be more what she's going to be able to.
Yeah, we'll see.
Ask maybe because you don't have many cars.
Whatever she can come up with, um, and, you know, obviously, I hope they'll be here to field any questions we may have.
Sorry, they came to every other meeting, but, you know, of course, the one meeting, we need her.
That's why we have a discussion.
That's why we're having a discussion in two weeks, so hopefully we can get answers there. But remember, everybody that's listening out there on the whole wide world, those are not increases, those are discussions on increases. Uh, it, it can only go down, it could be that, or it could go down, or it could be nothing at all. I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
If it's sixteen cents a year, it'd be a total of forty-eight cents in three years.
That would bump us up from the dollar seventy-one to, Mr. Marshall said, two twenty-four?
Well, two, two twenty, two twenty-two. Two twenty-three is the median, I think I said I wanted it.
Okay.
I just want to be in the middle of where, who else is that, because I think that's a fair. What everybody else? The entire region of southwestern Virginia, and then average that with our neighboring counties.
The neighboring counties.
There are only three cents difference in those two averages.
You can't compare those with Henry County and Franklin County, place that they get. I talked to somebody at Faco last November, and their property tax was forty-nine cents, and their personal, personal, whatever, was fifty-four cents, so.
You know what I noticed about compared?
Seven days before.
Sometimes it's convenient, sometimes.
Yep. So, I'm going to assume that we're finished with our.
Yep.
Old business now. Um, we've sent our, our budget hearing, that'll make it in the paper. Um, our reports, our administrator report.
I don't have anything.
Supervise reports, Mr. Marshall?
I have a procedural motion, Mr. Chairman, I move that my supervisor report be received and filed within the minutes without reading.
Okay.
I'll provide you with that.
Okay.
That's a motion, I think, has to be built on.
Okay, so I have a motion from Mr. Marshall to file his, um, supervisor report in the minutes without reading it at this point. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, um, any discussion? If not, Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Uh, that will be available in your minutes to look through. Um, Mr. Kendrick?
I think I had the EDA meeting and West Piedmont meeting, and it wasn't nothing, nothing drastic or nothing new in either one of them.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Perry?
So I attended, uh, step meeting, uh, step's got a couple of things going on here in Patrick County, they've got, uh, work appropriate clothing closet, uh, provides free workwear for individuals who need it that are seeking employment to start a new job, uh, whether it be business professional, business casual, or industry-specific clothing like scrubs. Uh, that will be in the Stewart step, uh, the fourth Thursday of each month from one to four, um, and there will be a, a registration required before receiving the clothing. Uh, but they are having a, a professional work, workwear closet. Uh, and on the same note, if you have professional workwear and clothing, maybe you've outgrown, or maybe for whatever reason you don't wear anymore, uh, they'll, they are taking donations, and you can drop those off at the staff office, uh, at any time. Um, I attended the Drug Free Patrick County Coalition, uh, so tonight they had a, a workshop for families, uh, discussing, uh, if you have a family member that's, uh, caught up with, um, in substance use disorder, uh, how you can help them, so it was a great workshop that was going on tonight. Uh, and they're also having an opioid summit, May the twenty-ninth, uh, at Patrick and Henry Community College, and it too will have information on how, what you can do to help, uh, family members. Also attended, uh, Patrick County Local Emergency Planning Committee, uh, just a lot of updates there, and I, Scotty, I got a tip you alls on with the, I saw firsthand everybody in action with the Gregory Pilot Fire. Uh, everything worked, worked very well, uh, Mr. Dollar Height with Stewart Fire Department was on top of everything, Scotty had his back calling in other, uh, states, localities, counties, and they were rolling in as, as fast and hard as they could. I think they had three separate fires that had, or two other fires that had branched out. Uh, it's a great job, thank you all very much. Um, and also, uh, with the sheriff's office, we've had a huge increase in scams lately. Uh, there's one specifically where you, you get a virus on your computer, you got to click on to let Windows come fix it, and basically they get all your information, and then they try to tell you to go to draw your money out of the bank, they're going to send a, somebody to come pick your money up for you. Uh, anytime, they really had a lot of, lot of problems with these in the county. Uh, if you have any questions about anything, please call the sheriff's office. Uh, tomorrow night, uh, the sheriff's office is having a, a presentation about the various scams that we are seeing here in our county. Uh, please go on the sheriff's office Facebook page, uh, to get a list of those presentation and the community crime watch meetings that are going on where they'll cover this information. Uh, again, when in doubt, call the sheriff's office, and, um, they can help fill you in what's going on, what your best course of action to take, and how you can protect yourself. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Overby?
I don't have anything.
Okay, um, I was able to attend the West Piedmont planning, um, they talked about a few grants that we've already applied for, uh, let's keep our fingers crossed on that. Um, I would like to bring up the two other things, uh, that actually came up again tonight. Um, I know I brought it up several months ago, I don't know how we need to do it, but I think we do need to make sure all committees, uh, that we have in our county basically have the same rules and regulations, uh, we, we need to look at that, I, I happen to see in the PSA.
I will say, so, I apologize to me, I meant to address that, so, they ask for, to, I guess be notified of public comment, maybe if there's some.
Yeah.
Research they could do on the, the front end, but they don't deny, like, if I show up at the PSA meeting, they don't deny, but I'll give Mr. Vernon to, to revise that.
If we could reword that somehow.
Yeah.
It, it reads like, like I read it, I think, and like, I don't remember who spoke on that. Uh, the other thing is, and right when I bring this up, our sheriff has, has left, thank you, Jalen. Um, right now, you know, in Patrick Springs, it is a terrible intersection, I live not far from that intersection, uh, when I come up from Lawsonville to farm down there, I, I take a back road so I can avoid that intersection. Um, if we could ask the sheriff's office to be diligent in monitoring speed and those rolling stops, um, coming from South Mayo and, uh, Spring Road, um, I, I think that would also help a lot as well, uh, that's at no cost to us except for the people who can't monitor their speed in their stops. Uh, if we can look, you know, I'll try to call him tomorrow and, and ask about that. Um, so I hope to give everybody a warning, slow down through Patrick Springs and stop at the stop signs.
And maybe, maybe contact Lisa Hughes too, I think that last study she did, it was supposed to be some kind of improvements there.
We, we had been advised to apply for smart scale, the next round of smart scale, which would be March of twenty-twenty-six, and so we've already been talking to West Piedmont Planning District because they have some transportation staff about, that's, um, last year when this came up, that's what we were, um, that's what we advised to apply for smart scale application for that intersection during the next round of smart scale, which is March of twenty-six.
As I know, a lot of people are pushing for a stoplight, I'm not a huge fan of stoplights, it bunches traffic up coming out of Walmart, and then I sit there in my driveway waiting to pull out, but, you know, um, whatever we can look into over the next year or two. But I think if we could just, uh, enforce our state law right there, uh, that would go a long way. I think if they did the study and what the average speed was fifty-three.